The city council meeting for the city of Hudson for Wednesday, May 30th, 2012. I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
District two, Yaku.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Teewinkle.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslow.
Here. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda tonight, it's your time. So I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the city council on any issue that's not on the agenda, it's your time. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? If not, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Madam Clerk?
The consent agenda items are to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 15th, 2012, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $289,915.23. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of an amusement device owner's license to William A. Lethert doing business as Mendota Valley Amusement Incorporated, and issuance of permits for 27 amusement device machines. To approve the issuance of an amusement device owner's license to Scott J. Furlong doing business as Leisure Entertainment TW LLC, and issuance of permits for five amusement device machines. To approve the Brian Laughton Box Celebrate Life Fun Run at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, September 29th, 2012, beginning and ending at White Camp Park. To approve the Halos of Hudson 5K Family Fun Day Walk Event at 9:30 a.m. on Saturday, August 4th, 2012, in Lakefront Park. To approve changing the stop sign on 7th Street at Malaloo Drive to a blind intersection sign. To place on file the quarterly reports of the library director, the water utility director, and the monthly report of the finance officer. That is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
Before we go to a roll call vote, can the people in the back here?
No.
Okay.
John?
If John's available, if we can turn up the volume on our speakers, that would be great. Now, can the people in the back, is that better?
Nope.
I guess not.
They would say not.
Why don't we try the roll call vote?
Teewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Here.
Is that any better back there?
It'll be a second.
Oh, it'll be a second.
Yes.
Maybe we were just talking louder. He'll be turning it up. The first item on the agenda would be our application of Faith Community Church for a special.
Operator's license got pulled.
Pardon?
Consent operator's was pulled.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself.
We have recommendations from the staff to approve regular license for the period of 5/31/12 to June 30th, 213. Now you can hear everything, can't you? Okay, that's better. And there's 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 15 of them. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have renewal and issuance of regular operator's license for the period of 7/112 to 6/3014. And there's 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12 of those. Any's our motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then lastly, we have the issuance of temporary operator's license to be used June 29th to July 1st during the Hudson Booster Days. We have 2, 4, 6, 7 of those. Is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have the application of Faith Community Church for special events permit for Sunday, June 24th, at Lakefront Park. Madam Clerk, do you have any comments?
They're, this is the first year that they're requesting this special event permit. They'd like a reduction in the amount of the requirement for the insurance and to set up a meeting with the Public Works Director regarding placement of the garbage cans and portable toilets. And there's a representative here to speak.
Pastor Larry Zaiman is here. If anyone has any questions for him. I believe it's the third year or fourth year in a row, Larry.
It's, I'm not quite sure whether it's third or fourth, but the size of this meeting will be significantly larger than the past. This year should be an anomaly, which would require a different type of permit for this year.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
We've reduced the insurance amount before for other programs, so it's nothing. Out of the ordinary. So I'd move for approval just regarding consultation with town's only.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good event. The next item on the agenda is update on funding for our library and funding options. Neil Soltis, our finance officer, has put a lot of time into this, into this proposal that we have in front of you. Just to kind of frame the issue a little bit, city taxpayers will be subject to both city levy for the library services and the county library unless some form of legislation action is taken. For 2013, the county library levy is projected to be approximately $256,500. Additional city funding for the library in 2013 will be needed to exempt from the county library levy. The amount of additional city funding for the library will vary based on whether the library remains a joint library, and the percentage of the cost of the library is reimbursed for circulation to residents on communities not participating in the library. These variables are shown based on the library steering committee recommendation that the joint library be disbanded and operate as a city library, and the county reimbursement system reimbursing the library at 100% of cost, which exceeds the 70% state minimum. The attachments below in your sheet, in your packets, provide projections to the cost of each of the Hudson area joint library members, the impact on library revenues under a series of options. The first sheet is to look at each option, while the second sheet shows the impact of each option based on the community. Chart is based on the second sheet, provides a graphic representation of each of the option to the city taxpayers. None of the options presented are based on all members taking the same action. Note that all the options presented are based that all members take the same option. The results would vary if it's not, if it's not all in the same case. So Neil, if you want to kind of walk us through that one more time, I know you've done this a few times.
Sure. Glad to. You know, what, the option facing the, the city and actually all the members of the joint library at this point is that our taxpayers are going to be subject to the county library levy if nothing is done. We're still trying to work with the county to find out some of those details, because this year the county is going to go through a process where they're going to come to each community that has a library and seek some type of resolution from the legislative bodies as to whether they are going to meet the minimum funding requirements in order to exempt themselves from the county library levy. At issue here, there, I think the other point to make before, before going further is that currently, the county library levy is based upon reimbursing libraries for 100% of the cost of circulation to residents who do not have libraries within their jurisdiction. That number has increased from 70% a number of years ago, and I think the county went from 71 to 85, and in the past two years, they have been at 100%. For the city to become exempt, whether the county, there, it would be a different number of funding for the city to become exempt, whether it's at 70% or the, the amount of the county library levy would be different to the city, whether it's at 70% or 100%. But the fact remains, under either option, to become exempt, we would need to find some additional funding or some additional source of funding for the library. The, you know, potential sources are, number one, finding it within our existing budget. Number two would be using, because we are subject to a levy limit from the state, using one of the adjustments provided by state statute. There is an adjustment provided in state statute for transfer of services from another governmental entity. The ruling that we've had, and we're attempting to challenge that ruling, is that, you know, the transfer of the services from the joint library to the city would be a transfer that should qualify for that adjustment. The other adjustment that is, you know, readily available is by going to referendum. By referendum, you can exceed, you know, if approved, you could exceed the county library or the levy limitation.
Can I just interrupt you there?
Absolutely.
So, in reality, or what he's saying is that assuming we go to a Hudson library
Yes.
and we disband, disband our joint library, that the dollars of $183,000 from the town of Hudson, $83,000 from the town of St. Joe, and $82,000 from the city or the village of North Hudson, would, we believe it would have been available to us to increase our levy, if we wanted to.
Correct.
But our ruling that we've had so far from the Department of the, Department of Revenue is, you don't get to use it.
That's absolutely correct.
But we're not done yet. We're still trying to work on that.
Right. And I think the other thing is even if your levy limit is increased, I think as Mayor Virchell pointed out at the Finance Committee meeting, you know, just because the limit is increased, it's up to you to make some determination at what level you're going to fund it at. And I think that's one of the keys. You know, when, I guess, you know, one of the questions all this begs is why would you want to increase your levy limit? And, you know, one of the things that we've seen under either scenario, whether it is, remains as a joint library, or whether the option goes where the joint library is disbanded and it becomes a local library, that if you are not exempt from the county library levy, you will pay more, our taxpayers will pay more in taxes than you would be if you were exempt. And at the same time, by going from, they're going, you'd pay more in taxes if you are not exempt, and the library gets less money. So if you look at it, if we were able to increase our local support for the library, the library will get more money, but the total tax burden combined between county library levy and local library levy will go down. And I think that's one of the principles that you have to, you know, that you have to understand in this. And that's where, if you look at the, the chart that was shown, the graphic here, and that's what I tried to show as best I could, in that you can see in the, the chart, the left-hand side represents the county continuing at 100% funding, the right-hand side is 70% funding. The little diamonds on top would be the total tax dollars from all entities to the library. So if you look at even the first two bars there, you can see where if no action is taken and our taxpayers are subject to the county library levy, the taxpayers will pay about an equal amount for library support to either the city and to the county. However, one of the things in here is even though you're paying that amount of money to the county, our local library will not get another dollar, because that, the county library is reimbursing the library based upon circulation. So if hypothetically, all the communities said, we're going to fund enough money to exempt, to exempt ourselves, the total taxpayer dollar from the city, you can see in this scenario, goes up a little. However, the funding available to the library takes a quantum leap. And you can go over to the next two columns and say, what happens if it's a city-only library? Where you can see if it's a city-only library, the, the amount that the city of Hudson taxpayers would pay in a county library levy would exceed what they're currently paying. However, if we were able to get around the issue of the levy limit, all of a sudden, the amount that they would be paying would drop, however, the funding to the library would increase. So it's, it's a really unique, you know, metric that's going on. So that's, I guess, the short of it. I'm, you know, if you have any questions, I'd gladly respond. I think one of the issues that we are looking at, though, if you look at a referendum, the, just due to the timing of the number of advance days you have to provide, the legislative body, the common council would have to provide to, you know, the local clerk and the county clerk, is 70 days in advance of an election. So for scheduling and going forward, if you were going to take the referendum route, we would have to take some action on a resolution that would be put up for referendum by August 28th of this year.
For the November?
For the November election.
And this is all being dictated by state law?
Yes, it is.
So the state is dictating how much the city of Hudson's going to pay for their library?
And, and some, well, it's not totally dictated by state law, you know, because the discretionary piece is that the county board elected to fund at 70% versus 100%. You know, you still have a formula, and even at that 70%, the difference that to become exempt would become quite a bit smaller, but it would still be there.
The increase in money that we would pay doesn't come back to the Hudson library, to the county. It's going to go to all the other libraries?
Correct.
So we're going to pay more money, and it's not even going to benefit our own library?
Right. As a matter of fact, if you play the scenario out and look at if, if there was no change by any of the communities, next year, the four communities who are the members of the Hudson Joint Library would pay over 50% of the county library levy. And our library would get no additional dollars from that. So what you're really doing is supporting the, the use of other libraries throughout the county by people who don't have libraries.
Two of about $400,000.
Correct.
Seems very efficient.
Questions from the council?
But county does not have any levy ceiling, correct?
Correct.
So whatever falls in their jurisdiction, you know, they could raise it however much they, they would need.
100% is the max.
Okay.
I believe.
Correct.
So, so the trick here is going to be to try to balance the impact on the taxpayer, the funding to the library without impacting the budget of the city.
That's your challenge.
That's the objective. Okay.
So let's go to item four at the bottom, the one that was recommended by the steering committee of the library.
Sure.
Basically, we're funding 256 now, 276?
278.
278. So roughly, we'd have to come up with, also, you have to come up with $200,000 out of our existing budget. We don't know what our levy limit would be for next year. We don't, we have.
We will know that on August 15.
Okay.
The levy limit growth is limited to that of net new construction. And if you look at what happened in terms of net new construction in 2011, I don't think it's going to make a sizable movement in that levy limit number.
What's our current levy limit?
Well, it's, the increase from last year, we could, we went up $69,000.
Right. Yes.
Maxed it?
That was the max.
Okay.
So we could spend $69,000 more than we spent the year before.
But it's all dependent on the new construction. That could be a smaller number than that.
Could be smaller next year. So somehow, we'd have to come up with roughly $200,000. Under the 100% plan, under the 70% plan, we'd have to come up with roughly $50,000.
So not to ask a weird question, but if we maxed out our levy, and that's all we would fund at, the county could, we wouldn't have to go to referendum, and the county would tax to whatever level, it would be somewhere in between, right?
No, we would be, we would be exempt then, because we.
I'm saying 2, 278 plus 69, let's just call it 70,000.
If we were to add the 70,000.
It would be like 340, so what, the county would, would tax less.
County wouldn't tax anything.
Well, what he's saying is it would be somewhere in the middle. Is that correct?
That's what I'm guessing, yeah.
Well, if we don't, if we don't meet 100%, then they're going to use their.
No, it doesn't work that way.
No. It's, you know, for the exemption, it's all or nothing.
I'm talking about the county levy. The county levy would go down.
If we don't meet 100%, then they're going to levy.
Then it doesn't matter. We, we have to meet 100. We, it isn't like we can give them 80, and then they tax the neck. No, it's either all or nothing. We have to either be there, or they tax the whole thing. Correct? Is that right?
It's an on-off switch. You either meet the exemption calculation, or you don't.
So that 352 is fixed. That's, we can't change that with, based on our contribution.
Well, it's really 471.
I mean, if, if, if we are, if we are not exempt, that is roughly going to be the number.
Right.
You know, because, you know, and where I say roughly, this projection is based upon what happened in, with, you know, it's based upon the county's levy for 2012. The information for 2013 hasn't been compiled yet, so this is assuming that it's going to be at least somewhat similar, just, you know, for, for numbers. The county, as I said, you really won't have those exact numbers until August, August 15.
But John, you were looking at number three there, weren't you?
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah. And basically, that would be the very least desirable, because we, the county would tax 631,000, and our library would only get 670,000.
Right.
And the other municipalities would pay a million for, or a million, so almost $330,000 would go outside our, our municipalities. So.
So if we go to a city library instead of a joint library, we have to come up with $200,000?
If we stay within our budget.
Best case.
Best case. But Neil's going to find an answer for that, aren't you? That's what we were told earlier in finance. Questions?
If we continue and do nothing, then the taxpayer is going to pay an additional $60,000 between the city and the county. Just the county? Just the county. Yeah. The city will stay the same, so the county will raise the taxpayer $60,000.
256, yeah.
That would be 256, yeah. They'll pay 256, and I was looking compared to 471. The impact on the taxpayer in that scenario is an additional 60 some thousand dollars.
Oh, I see.
Yep. Other questions?
So you guys talked about the transfer of levy, that's, would be a good thing? In terms of we, well, not necessarily, because then we'd be raising taxpayer dollars, is that what we're saying here?
If we were to allow the county to tax for us?
No, if we were allowed to use the levy transfer, that would just mean we could raise our tax levy.
If we decided we wanted to do that. If this group decides they want to raise taxes. Yes, that would be an option that would help fund the library.
We'd have to go to referendum, no doubt.
Not if we had the, if we had the limits transferred to us, I think we'd have enough money if we decided we wanted to spend that money. We'd have to tax our, our taxpayers, our residents.
I, just to be clear, the, the levy limit worksheet has an adjustment for transfer of services. And so if it's transfer of services from one governmental agency to another, you're allowed to basically move that levy limit. So, you know, the theory that we approach the Department of Revenue with is currently the local communities, you know, outside of our local community, the three other members are levying roughly 340,000 for the joint library. And if that's viewed as a separate governmental entity, in theory, that, those amounts, and if you look at kind of the upper-left option for the town of Hudson, town of St. Joseph, and the village of North Hudson, their levy limits would decrease by those amounts, but, and in theory, you know, we've held that we should be able to increase our, at least limit by that amount, even though we may not need all that money to meet the county exemption. The Department of Revenue has not bought onto that argument yet. They've said no once, and we are continuing to try.
Well, they've said no twice. Well, and we're still trying.
Regardless, the. It all hinges on that June 18th meeting with the county, right? Before we can take an action and a direction of whether we do referendum, whether the partners pull out of the joint library, the steering committee's telling us they would prefer us pull out and be a city.
Well, I would like to see that from the joint library board versus a steering committee. I'd like to see the official board make a recommendation to us.
But ultimately, it's a decision of the partners.
Correct. All four needed, correct? Yep.
Well, no, each, there's a provision for withdrawing. I mean, to disband, I guess it would be a decision of all four, but any one community or two can choose to withdraw on giving a.
They have to wait a year, I believe. They have a one-year notice.
I guess I'm trying to.
Actually, maybe that's, unless they all agree.
Unless we all agree to disband.
That's just what I'm trying to do, is trying to wrap the timeframe around. This June 18th meeting with the county, and then what?
Is that a.
We'll know the scope of the problem or the issue of how much money we have to have.
Is it on the agenda for the county board meeting?
It's on the agenda for the administrative meeting for the 18th.
Okay. And so then the next county board meeting is probably.
July, first week in July?
I don't know.
I don't know when it is.
And just to clarify it, because we haven't talked about it here, but there's interest in the joint partners approaching the county board to see if they would consider reverting back to the 70%.
What is, what do the people here think? What do you guys think? Should we, is that something that you think is worthwhile pursuing?
Absolutely. Been saying that since day one.
Pardon?
I've been saying that since the beginning, so.
Well, it can't hurt. It doesn't sound like that's going to happen, but, I mean, certainly can't hurt.
Okay. That way, if you were to look at the far right bottom, we'd have to come up with roughly what, $50,000 versus 200?
But, you know, the downside of that depend, will directly affect total library funding as well.
Correct.
I think the other thing to look at, though, if the county did make a decision to fund at 70%, it may be more palatable for the other member communities to keep the joint library together.
And even if there could be some incremental change.
Correct.
We kind of got, you know, hit pretty hard with those other ones, and, I mean, even if there could be an incremental change up to something other than 100%, I think it's worth talking about.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or for Neil? I put this on the agenda so we're trying to keep everybody abreast of what we're, what we're doing. We're trying pretty hard. I know the library is, is, the library board is wrestling with the same issues that we are. And Barb Peterson is here from the library, if you, if you want to make any comments, Barb. We'd sure appreciate it.
Thank you for this opportunity. Just to let all the members of the council know that the joint area library board totally appreciates the, the challenges that you're facing, given this situation, and appreciates all the time and effort and thought that you have put into it, and all of the very hard and very professional work that Neil has put into this, trying to understand the situation and to make sure that we all can appreciate the options available. We certainly are hoping and praying, perhaps, that that levy transfer solution does get approval. And we know that it would, with difficulty, would be possible to do some shifting, but the idea of going to the taxpayers and asking for their approval for an increase in levy limit, we would be very supportive of. And we would put our time and effort into supporting the approval of such a, as part of our responsibility as library trustees, to be advocates for the library, for the citizens of these communities. So, and I heard Alan, your request that that support, the steering committee's recommendation be approved by the full board. So, and I heard Alan, your request that that support, the steering committee's recommendation be approved by the full board, and I will put that on the agenda of our next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, is there anybody else that would like to say anything about the library? Okay? Any other questions for Neil? Any more updates? We'll, we'll try and keep this on a, if we have new information, we'll, I would guess, if we're looking at the June-
Twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth, we may have some information to bring back for that, hopefully. At least get a reading from the administrative committee, their thoughts. Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification. So, potentially, all four municipalities could go to referendum.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, there's just, I think there's a lot more permutations here than-
On that question, so if all four municipalities go to referendum, do all four referendums have to pass it?
No.
Well, no.
No.
We can't control the outcome, and then we'll have different scenarios to look at.
We would be, let's assume Hudson passes.
Right.
And someone else doesn't. We would be in compliance, and they may not.
Yeah. And they would have to no longer-
See, that's why we didn't wanna run all these different scenarios.
That's, that's correct, and if, if, if you wanna look at millions of numbers, we could, we could run those permutations.
Yeah.
However, you know, I think I've described this as, you know, the options we presented are like the four corners of a box.
Yeah.
That's, you know, it's all in or all out, you know, based upon the various scenarios. And if any actions are taken by one that you're not in lockstep, you're going to be somewhere in the middle. But there are just, you know, far too many permutations there. If you, you know, but you have to understand what the relationship is. And once you do that, you know, I think it, it helps to clarify the decision.
I suppose it will have an impact, though, on the joint library agreement. I mean, we'll have to look at that, because the funding is set up, is addressed also in that agreement. And then one, I mean, that will present a, a different set of facts that we'll just have to look at.
So, potentially, there'll be a decision made whether or not to keep the joint library together prior to any potential referendum? I mean, I, I wanna get a handle on-
Timing?
What that looks like. I mean, just the progression of events. Are we gonna have a decision regarding the-
Well, in some ways, municipalities may, well, if they're willing to go to referendum, their decision on whether to stay in the joint library will depend on the outcome of that referendum. You know, I don't know that there can be a hard and fast decision before the referendum.
It takes all four people to dissolve the, all four municipalities to dissolve it in one year. I mean, right away.
I think there would, right, because otherwise it's a year-long-
Otherwise, it's gonna last another year.
Yeah. It's a notice, yeah.
You have to give a year's notice. I believe that's correct.
Didn't you also say that the outcome of the, if we ask for the seventy percent and get some variation, or get the seventy percent, that the, the joint members might actually stick around, based on funding?
Because then the amount of funding is a lot, needed is a lot less.
So we kinda need to know what the county's gonna do.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm just trying to get a handle on, would we go to referendum, not knowing whether the, the joint library is staying together?
Well, they may say if it's at a hundred percent, they may just say, hey, we can't put that in front of our communities. I mean, we don't know what they're going to say, but that's one option.
I don't know what this group wants to do either.
Right. So a lot depends on the hundred versus seventy percent.
All right. One, yep, I'll ask one more time. Any other questions for Neil, or any other comments? All right. Thank you. Thanks, Neil. Thanks, Neil. St. Croix Valley Fire Service Agreement with St. Croix Falls. Chief Frye?
Yeah, this is something Eric had started before he had left to try to get another agency, or pulses agency that had ropes, technical rescue, rope technicians and equipment. So, I just followed up the, the signed contracts ended up on my desk. I just did the issue sheet and sent them on. But that main thrust is for, for that agreement, is for their technical rescue, their ropes and their, and their rope technicians. We've not had a, an agreement with St. Croix Falls in the past. This is the same agreement that we've used throughout St. Croix County and that, so.
Any questions of the chief? Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Committee, wastewater treatment plant compliance, manual, maintenance, annual report. Jim?
Compliance maintenance annual report measures the performance and assesses the, the compliance for all permit requirements for the wastewater utility. The wastewater utility, just as a little refresher, consists of a design flow at our wastewater treatment plant of two point two million gallons per day, sixty miles of collection line, fourteen pumping stations. We also oversee the cleaning maintenance for fourteen miles approximately of collection line in the Village of North Hudson, under agreement. And we manage the, and operate the main lift station, pumping station for the Village of North Hudson. This is done with a staff of four full-time operators, one utility director, and the support staff of City Hall. The, the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, or CMAR, evaluates the utility in nine categories, assesses letter grades, and then an overall grade point average for those nine categories. In eight of the categories, the utility received an A or a four point oh, and in one category, a B. And so let's look at that category. That was affluent performance as it relates to phosphorus. In July of two thousand eleven, we had a, a monthly average of one point zero five. Our permit level is one point zero. So we, we had a slightly elevated level of phosphorus that month. It was caused by a continuing problem of polymer pump not performing as it should. It was repaired. It failed. It was repaired continuously through the month. Was replaced, subsequently replaced with a new pumping system, and we retained compliance shortly after. For the annual average for phosphorus, we were well below our permit level. We averaged zero point six, which is fairly consistent with what we've done in the past. So while we're talking about phosphorus, our permit renewal, which will happen in two thousand fifteen, will likely contain a lower phosphorus limit. And it looks like that will be zero point six. So we will have to make some modifications so that we can, can consistently meet that limit. So, we will be conducting some tests with various chemicals to see if we can reliably be under that zero point six limit. Then we can calculate what this will cost, so that by two thousand fifteen, we'll know what, how that will impact our budget. We feel that we can do that with our existing infrastructure. There'll still be an added cost of the chemical itself, and the chemical addition, but. And also, it will probably increase our solids production, so that will, that will impact our cost also.
Would there be some equipment also, Jim, that might be required?
Uh, we, we have the polymer, we have, or, excuse me, we have the chemical feed equipment already. We have chemical tankage that we can use for that.
Okay.
We may end up wanting to purchase some added monitoring equipment, so that we know what various levels are at different points in our system.
Okay.
So that'll be an added expense on the capital side. So, overall, our GPA for the utility was three point nine one. We feel, we feel we're, we feel that we are in a very, very good shape for not only our current situation, both structurally, organizationally, and monetarily. Our rates are adequate to meet all of our current needs. And those rates are very low statewide. We are the, we have the lowest rates of anyone in western Wisconsin. We're very proud of that fact. And we still continue to provide high-quality treatment for the wastewater that goes into our beautiful St. Croix River. So, we also are in a good position to meet our future needs for any, any increased limits that we may face, or any additions that we'll need to make to our wastewater plant. We have a future facilities fund. I listed the, the amounts of all of these funds in our issue sheet. The equipment replacement fund, when we have to replace equipment. And also, we have a collection system replacement fund for the collection lines and pumping stations themselves. Couple of other items while I'm here. Our mercury minimization plan has worked very effectively. The levels of mercury have been reduced by about fifty percent. We're not quite at the desired level yet. We'll have to drop another part per trillion off of, off of the level of mercury to, to meet all future compliance, but we are headed in the right direction. I think that's all that I had, but I would sure entertain any questions.
You, we purchased equipment last year to reduce our gas usage from XL Energy?
Well, to reduce our electrical energy.
Electrical, excuse me.
Yes. We-
How's that working?
It's working. It was installed in the middle of December. So we have a little bit of history, and it has performed as advertised.
Okay.
So, we're on track to reduce our electrical cost with that piece of equipment by approximately twelve thousand dollars per year. So that's, that's been a very good investment.
Okay.
Is the operation of the U-line facility impacting your operational? Or is it so small that it's not really gonna be a-
That, that usage was taken into effect, or into, into account in our, our current plan. And the, the wastewater treatment plant can handle a total build-out of our current corporate limits. So, one, one thing about the industrial park is that the types of entities that are sighted there are fairly low water users, which, which helps us out. But we can meet the needs of everything in the corporate limits. We would need an expansion if we would add to that.
Devin, on the funds that we have, is, are we adequate there, or Jim?
Right. Those are inside, those are put in each month, segregated funds.
Correct.
So they're-
But is there a state minimum or requirement for those future funds, or future equipment, or replacement?
Equipment replacement fund is tied to our, our, the loan that we acquired, Clean Water Fund loan.
Okay.
So we have to maintain a certain balance in those.
Okay.
The other funds are a little more flexible than that. That, that loan will be retired in two thousand eighteen. So, we will not have any debt after that, unless we incur something else. So, not too bad.
Yeah, we, we've met the, the funding requirements.
It's time to expand.
Questions, anyone? Good job, Jim.
And also to the, the operating staff. They've done a tremendous job. And one thing that gets lost is, these guys are responsible twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The place always is running, and they have to keep it going, and they do a great job.
We agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we need a resolution. Nine dash, or we have to suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Nope?
Yes.
Yep. So we need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call?
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Haggit?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
Is there a motion for resolution nine dash twelve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, we have a review agreement with San Pedro's Restaurant for dumpster, dumpsters on city property. Mary?
So, uh, public safety, it came to our attention that there was, Jim, Chief Frye was having difficulty with parking spots and the, in the public safety area with, for emergency vehicles. And also, we needed to review the agreement that we have with San Pedro's Cafe, or San Pedro's Restaurant for their dumpsters. It hadn't been, the agreement hadn't been updated since it first was brought to the books quite a while ago, so. We came to the conclusion that we were gonna try to work together with Pete to, to move the dumpsters so that it takes up less parking to help out Chief Frye. And then we also, there was also, it was also suggested that the four spots just north of the striped area be reserved for emergency responders to give them more park, more adequate parking is, so that's basically the bottom line. Pete, San Pedro's does pay twenty-five dollars a month to have the dumpsters, to have the dumpsters on our lot. So, he's very willing to comply with however we wanna handle the situation. We thought about moving the dumpsters up on the hill more, but the only flat area is really where they are now, so it's really the only acceptable area in that lot, in our opinion. So, I don't know, Chief, do you have anything to add to that, or?
I just wanted to make a correction. You said north. It's the four stalls to the south.
South, sorry. Yeah, south. Sorry.
And Pete has had Viola move the dumpsters and, and shrink down their footprint a little more. From, from the photos that were there, they've taken and moved their, uh,
Your sink.
linen container back to their patio, back towards their patio, and, and have shrunk down the space that they were taking up. Still like to see those four parking stalls on the south end reserved for emergency service responder.
So this is a private business putting stuff on public property for a fee?
Yes.
Okay.
That was approved back in nineteen, or in two thousand and seven, by whichever previous council approved it.
So are we gonna see the final agreement, or are we just kinda giving?
Well, it was recommend, it was recommended too that we rework up the agreement, because it doesn't show the cost that they're paying per month, and there is recyclable containers that were added to that area. We're hoping that the dumpsters will be in one, essentially one stall, like handled in the alleys, where they can have it on wheels and just pull it out. We're gonna compact it as much as we can, but it all has to go on the agreement, so yeah, it has to be reworked.
Is the purpose of it solely just because they do not have room?
Yes.
Or they don't have a good flat spot?
They don't have room.
And, I mean, you wanna consider whether you wanna keep the compensation the same, and that sort of thing.
I think it's fair, I think it's a fair compensation. It's three hundred dollars a year. To get a contract parking spot, you pay a hundred dollars a year. I don't think it's unreasonable, but.
Comments, thoughts?
Well, can we just make a motion that it go back to public safety, and that the final agreement comes to full council? I mean, I agree with it in concept and-
Yeah, but you'd like to see it. Yep.
Yeah. Other, yeah, so I guess that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Any other thoughts? I don't believe we've had any problems with this situation, and it, I think it's, it's working fine. My opinion, but. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Update on projects. Dennis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We got about an hour-long report. I'm just kidding. I think there's an agenda item after- I think there's an agenda item after mine a little more interesting. But I just want to report briefly on the two public projects that will be going forward. And one is the street reconstruction and overlay project, and the other is the street maintenance improvements. The street reconstruction and overlay project, individuals on Grandview Avenue between Vine and Ash. Probably have seen some utility markings, and that was done in advance of some survey being done. So, I just asked residents to try to leave the flags there for about a week. If you mow your lawn, please put the flags back, but should be able to take those down in about a week or so. And construction would be anticipated starting late July along that area. Also for the alley north of river between Sixth and Seventh. The other part of that project is milling and overlaying some pavement on Carmichael from Vine to the middle school entrance. And again, that's just milling and overlaying, that's not reconstruction. The other project is a street maintenance where the city has capital funding for some crack filling and flex patching. And on the agenda is the six streets that would be involved. That was recommended from Public Works Department. And we're trying to get those ads in the paper by next week already, and bring it back to the council on the second meeting in June with some bids for that. Private developments, not a whole lot to report since the last meeting, so I'll stop there if anyone has any questions.
Carmichael Road between the township and our portion to the interstate, are we doing some crack sealing there too, through the county? Do we decide to do that?
Yeah, that wasn't part of this bid, but that was, Public Works was going to coordinate with the county, correct.
It came in at a pretty good price, didn't they? Did you see that at all?
I did not see it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions on that? Okay. Thank you. Next is regard, discussion regarding boat docks on city property.
Mr. Mayor, recuse myself.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself, but I won't.
But you won't, huh?
I seriously just dropped my jaw.
Lori?
Well, and I don't want to preempt the discussion, but one thing I do want to point out is our meeting schedule has been changed drastically from what it was originally set at due to the recall election next week. That being said, Tom Zooli's not here this week because of a planned vacation. I don't want to preempt any discussion, but it seems like maybe this is not a great time to have a lengthy debate without Tom's input. And what I'd really like to suggest we do is, is look at scheduling a public hearing when Tom is here, when we can hear fully from, you know, everyone involved, where we have a meeting that's solely focused on that. And I'd like to hear what other council members think.
How far out does a public hearing have to be?
How far out?
I mean, do we have, does it have to be like 60 days' notice or 30 days?
No.
Just a reasonable amount of time. We probably want to publish it once in the paper and then probably notify the.
It's just to take input on the issue.
It's not required.
Because depending on what the council decides to do, there may be different hearing requirements depending on what the council decides to do if you're talking about.
I think that's a good idea.
And I mean, I'm not trying to delay it, and I realize that, you know, people are anxious to talk about it, and I don't want the delay to be, you know, perceived as a reluctance to make a decision. It's just if we're going to end up going through a lot of this again with Tom present, and I don't know. I just, I'm curious what other people think.
Other members' thoughts?
I think it's a good idea, actually. I wouldn't have even thought about it, but there's four of us to have to make a decision. And there's a lot of information, and more information that just came. I think, I'm assuming this is additional. It might be.
A delay would be better for me. I would certainly support that at this point in time, although I know there are a lot of people who are anxious to discuss the issue. Rescheduling of it would be probably good.
Okay. Kurt?
I, I realize the anxiousness also. But on the other hand, I think some of that anxiousness is tempered by, I've heard a lot, let's not jump to any conclusions. So, I think a public hearing, because that's basically, I mean, we're just listening at that point.
Right.
What does that mean for?
I mean, that would be the purpose.
What does that mean for the current situation with the docks down there? Are they permissible right now until all this is?
Well, they're in violation of the city ordinance.
Right now, they are.
Yeah.
Can we, can we have them permissible until we come to a decision here? Otherwise, you know what I'm saying? I don't understand.
I think you can just.
The ones that are out, I guess.
Yeah. No, I think you can make a decision, don't add any docks, assuming you're going to come to a decision.
Well, yeah, I would hope we're coming to a decision.
Soon. But yeah, there's no sense in taking out the docks or citing the people if it's still in the decision-making process.
What day would you?
I think it should be clear that it's, they're private docks. The city does not maintain them, and they're not permitted except for purpose of this time for deliberating and making a decision.
Do we, do we face any potential liability issues?
Well, yes. I mean, it's on city property. It's a structure that's on city property, so you can't avoid the potential liability.
What day would you like to have the public hearing?
Day I'm here?
Or what evening?
Well, what about, I don't, how soon can it be, Devin? Does there need to be a?
And technically, you wouldn't have to. Have a notice in the paper, give more courtesy letters to the interested parties.
Yeah, there's, this is not a required public hearing. You're doing that because you want to hear from people. But if you want people to know about it, you should schedule it and advertise it.
Okay.
Well, that's only the right thing to do.
Yep. Well, let's pick a date.
We could have, we could have a notice in next Wednesday's paper, Thursday's paper.
Do we want to do it in conjunction with the June 11th meeting? Does that make sense? Or?
Or do you want to do a?
Will Tom be back?
Yes, he's back Friday.
Oh, okay.
Or did you want to, you had mentioned doing this a separate?
I mean, my only other thought was, June 4th is too early, because we had a, we, yeah.
Well, we don't even have.
Never mind.
Yeah, I mean. I think we could do it with June 11th meeting if we get it in the paper the week before.
You could start it.
There's a strong, I don't know if, I don't know if I need to be here for that meeting, but there's a strong possibility that I would not be able to meet on that date.
Then you don't have quorum.
Then we don't have a quorum again.
I may, well, and that's a problem, because I may not be available to meet until the week of the 18th or later, depending on a lot of things.
Let's move it to the 25th.
Can we do anything the end of next week?
What do you mean?
I will not be available.
For advertising?
It wouldn't get in the paper till Thursday, so that would be.
That's why I asked, does it have to be in the paper?
I won't be available next week.
No, you could put it on the website.
We, the four of you need to be able to be there.
When are you available, Rich?
I am probably not going to be available, and this is even questionable until the week of the 18th, and that could be questionable.
So, would you be available on the 25th?
Yes.
Which is a council meeting?
Let me say that I believe I'm going to be available on the 25th.
Why don't we shoot for the 25th?
Do you want to do it at 6:30? And if we need to move finance, you know, that'll give you a little.
Why don't we do it at quarter six, or six o'clock, six o'clock?
Finance?
And just not have a kind?
We could have finance prior to that.
Okay, so that would give us an hour?
An hour, yeah, that should be plenty. That work for you?
6:00 PM on the 25th of June.
Okay. So, then will we also have it on the agenda, the full agenda for the 25th?
It will be on the agenda.
On the council agenda.
On the council.
Is this for Monday night?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Be the infom, gathering information and input on the issue and then.
I'm sorry, I'm gone.
I hadn't thought about that.
And you know, I just, I mentioned this earlier. People made plans according to the council meetings. They've all gotten shifted. I am not here on the 25th.
You're gone on the 25th?
I'm gone.
Okay.
Well, we can do it in between the 18th and the 25th.
I don't think so, Rich. That's going to be tougher, right?
It's, it's, it's an uncertain situation.
Right.
Further out, the better for you.
Yeah, that's further out, the better for me.
How about the 9th, July 9th?
I'm not getting away. I'm not here.
Let's go back to, are you gone that whole week?
Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to throw in another idea. Should we take some comment tonight? And put it on the agenda for our next council meeting?
Which would be?
Are you at the next council meeting? You at the next council meeting?
I probably will not be on, here on the 11th.
Okay. Because of the library?
No.
No.
So, it sounds like it's going to be difficult to get everyone here, and so maybe we should take public comment tonight.
I mean, you can always take more.
Right.
Comment at the other meetings, and people are here.
Okay.
So, I guess I'll.
Can we take comment without a quorum?
We have quorum now.
Not really, you can't have.
I understand that, but I'm saying the 11th.
On the 11th.
You wouldn't have a quorum for this issue.
Because you're, you're meeting as a governmental body, and you need to have a quorum to do that. Otherwise, you're not, you don't have any capacity, so.
Okay. So, you want to take hearing tonight, and then we'll take it up at our next meeting?
It would, yeah, it would not be able to be addressed until the first council meeting in July. I should have a special meeting because you're, he's not here on the 11th.
Okay.
You're not here on the 25th.
Okay.
So, you want to wait, or do you?
This is my, that's.
But then, Mary, you're gone.
I'm, yeah, well, my, my vacation's been getting switched a lot, so.
We've got people here who want to speak. We're all here. We should hear comment.
You know, there's someone that definitely would like to speak tonight, so.
We're just going to have to get reminded of all the comments a month later.
Yep. Well, you guys will remember.
Well, it'll be, it's taped, and so that will be available.
Yeah.
So, we've got a, something submitted by a group of individual, submitted by the First Street property owners? Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, I'm an owner on First Street, and it was on the agenda, and there's a lot of people here that have spent some time to be here.
Yes.
So, is it, are you saying that we're going to just move it to another date?
No.
Or we can still speak a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Not, I'm not going to, I don't know. Sorry.
Well, the guidance, you should step down from the table.
Okay.
Did Lori want to do the?
No.
No, Rich.
So, if we're going to do that, then I will recuse myself, so Rich, you can run the meeting.
You can do it from there, Rich.
I probably can't see the audience from here, and I probably can't show this.
Bring that up so that Al doesn't get, doesn't get blamed for either the bad words or the bad actions I might take tonight. So, it won't be the, I'll get, I'll get what I deserve. Okay. The agenda item says discussion of the docks on First Avenue. Docks on city property, I'm sorry. And so, we can open that discussion. How many, how many people here are going to speak? Or let me ask you this, the group that submitted the, the information, is that going to be a presentation? Are you looking to make a presentation on that?
Yes, that was about 10, 15 minutes.
About a 10 or 15 minutes of presentation? All right. Is, are there people here who are going to speak after that 10 or 15-minute presentation? And how many people would there be? One? Two, three?
You can link whatever you want.
Okay, so we have five people who would like to speak, six people, seven people who would like to speak after the presentation. So, if we live in that, the three minutes, three minutes per person is 20-minute, 10-minute presentation. All right. Why don't we do the presentation first by the group of people who submitted the information? And following that, we'll allow three-minute presentations by the people who would like to speak.
I might have to get John to help me. There's a way for me to see my notes. I knew I'd have problems. John really is recused, even though I'm having technical difficulties. I have to rely on him to get it kind of going for me. We did practice that part, just didn't work out for me. Apparently, I have to go with my handwritten notes, and that's, that's fine. Good evening, Council.
Would you give us your name and address?
Yes, I absolutely will. Try to not, there, I couldn't maybe do that, because I want to be able to see your faces. My name is Sarah Atkins. I reside at 925 First Street. I am one of the current dock owners that resides in the area west of First Street, between St. Croix and Orange Streets. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a group of First Street residents. We have worked together the past six weeks, so I'm not speaking solely for myself. Before I get started, I would like to thank each of you council members for taking on the dock topic. We are in agreement with you that the current situation that has been in place for about a quarter of a century is ready for a change. We know this topic has been discussed by councils before you with no resulting clarifications or policy changes. However, with the current council, it seems we have members who are committed to implementing some changes that will clarify the policy for the dock owners, the public, and the city. And for that, we are grateful. This is a very complex topic. Whoops, now I'm going too fast. This is a very complex topic. There are many groups that have an interest in the outcome, and we see those parties as being the city that adopts and enforces its policies, the residents along First Street, the people who utilize the walking path, the users of the water within the Bay Area, and finally, the rest of Hudson's residents. The group of property owners have been working together, rolling up our sleeves, brainstorming, and weighing all the possible policy options we could think of for the docks in this area. With each option, we took time to consider the impact it would have for these interested parties, the walking path itself, and the neighborhood that the land shares. I'll be presenting our findings and conclusions and proposing what we believe to be the best three alternatives that provide the most positive outcomes for the majority of the affected groups. As our team discussed the dock issue and brainstormed the possible options, it solely occurred to us that the walking path is really central to the topic. The walking path is a treasure and definitely a valuable asset to Hudson, but it also creates a unique situation. The walking path is located in a residential neighborhood. This is not like the pathways through Lakefront Park that lay within a business district. Since this is a residential area, we believe the area's management policy, policies should be guided differently than those, say, in a business district. With each dock option that we considered, we looked into the future to speculate and predict what the resulting consequences would be for the walking path, for the land that abuts the path, and for the shoreline and the bay. and predict what the resulting consequences would be for the walking path, for the land that abuts the path, and for the shoreline and the bay. Then we asked whether the resulting picture fits with the goals for the area. So, the question became, what is the goal for the area? What is that vision of the walking path, say, ten, fifteen years from now? We feel the interested parties would benefit by having such a long-term, clearly defined vision for the walking path. Then that vision could guide the management approach and other decisions for the area. We concluded that if we had a detailed vision for the walking path and waterfront, it would be apparent that some of the dock alternatives would be in alignment with that vision and some would be counterproductive. So, we ask each of you council members to envision your, the future of the walking path as we proceed in this discussion. Uh, the land the city owns now has a rich and interesting history. The area of interest is shown on this slide. The left map shows the relative location of the property in question and the aerial photo on the right shows the residential lots and the adjacent property, city-owned property to the west of the residential properties. This is the first plat map of the area. It was in eighteen forty-eight, before Hudson, the city of Hudson came into existence. Uh, the area was actually named the Village of Buena Vista and this map clearly shows that the repairant owners and are the properties now on the west side of First Street at that time. However, during the years that followed, the railroad caused many geographic changes. There's not enough time to review that now, but we did provide a brief history in your council packets prior to this meeting. It's a lot of interesting history and I'd be happy, uh, we all would be happy to discuss it with anyone who wants to learn more about that history, anyone in the audience. Based on our research, there are three relatively important and relatively recent milestone dates. Uh, we believe it was nineteen seventy-four when the railroad was officially abandoned. This date is important because federal and railroad law that was in place at the time of abandonment dictates what's to be done with that land. We have not had time yet to research that law. The next, uh, recent milestone was in nineteen eighty-one. Our understanding that this is when the city adopted the current code that's on the books that covers docks. We are not sure if the current code language was on the books prior to eighty-one, but we know for sure at eighty-one, the ordinance as it reads today, uh, was last adopted. The current municipal code has not changed in the past thirty-one years. The city did not own the Bay Area at the time the code was adopted. From what we've been told, it didn't even own the land north of the Dyke in nineteen eighty-one. So, it's reasonable to say that the current code was not written with the current situation in mind. The next date is nineteen eighty-eight, when the city of Hudson purchased the abandoned railway. There are some unanswered questions regarding the railroad law and the federal law in place at the time of, of abandonment. There may have been a requirement to offer the land to the adjacent property owners first. At that time, the property owners were told that the city was to be the broker in those transactions as the railroad did not deal directly with the individual property owners. But the land was never actually offered to the adjacent property owners. Regardless of those unanswered questions, when the city acquired the land in nineteen eighty-eight, it was aware that there were docks on the bay for generations. The current property owners believe that the city should have addressed the outdated municipal code at that time. The city now owned waterfront property in a residential area for the very first time. Even though there have been numerous requests for clarification from council and First Street property owners, there have been no code changes in the past thirty-one years. Instead, ever since nineteen eighty-eight, the city has been permissive with docks repeatedly stating to property owners that these docks were grandfathered in and that having docks was okay. I am not sure, but I think there's a legal term that applies to the ability to trust something you've been repeatedly told. Um, I think it's a stopple or something like that. We've been acting on the faith that the city was telling us accurate information. Financial decisions, purchases, and improvements by property owners were based on city input relative to the docks. Uh, this slide is particularly interesting, maybe to some of us who live along First Street. The photograph on the, on the left shows the area before the walking path was installed and, um, you see there's five clear docks in place at that time. And then there's another photograph from nineteen ninety-five that's, uh, up near the Cluckers' place and then a couple that we grabbed from more recently, two thousand four and two thousand seven. But now, here we are in the situation together. We are neighbors, really, neighbors with an issue that needs attention. Things are the way they are because they got this way and unless things change, they're going to stay the same. We want that change and we know this council does too. We are asking that both the property owners and the city each take some of the accountability for the situation we now find ourselves in and then together move forward towards creating a reasonable outcome for as many as the interested parties as possible. With a clear vision of the purpose of the walking path that I mentioned earlier, we believe we can work together to develop a win-win plan that fits that vision. So, you'll see a decision tree that we made. As we brainstormed, we found it easier to map out the thought process and, um, we, we started, we backed up a minute and we put the first decision that needed to be made was the question of the land. There is a, an option that could be considered to actually sell that land to the adjacent property owners and retain an easement, uh, for the walking path. Uh, so the two decisions based on land are sell, the city could sell the land or not sell the land. If the city does not sell the land, the choices are to allow docks or to not allow docks and those are the orange circles that you see on the chart. Uh, we just kept on going with this. Uh, if you were to allow docks, they could be private docks and we believe that's still an option and, uh, or they could be city docks and then there are options below those. Uh, if you don't allow docks, then there are still a couple of options. You can, uh, allow docks to, you can permit the current docks for some period of time. Uh, at the previous council, um, Rich had mentioned two, three years or at some point in time, he wanted it to end, but there could be some sunset and then, uh, the other option number seven, there is immediate ten-day notice to, to the current property owners. So, at one hand, you have the sale of land to the owners and the other, uh, the immediate ten-day notice. So, but there are a lot of options in between. And the further away from the left side of these options that you see on the chart, the, uh, property owner's perspective is moving from a win-win to a win-lose. Uh, we've reviewed the details of all seven of these options and documents given to you folks in advance of this meeting. For days, for today's presentation, I'll only have time to cover the first three options, all of which are acceptable to the property owners in which we consider to be win-win propositions. Similarly to the historical information we have put together, we are willing to discuss any seven of these options with any interested party in more detail when more time can permit. So, option number one is the option to sell the land, um, to the property owners. And I, I am gonna have to open this up, 'cause I don't have any notes for this. Oops, that's not gonna work apparently. It does?
I'm trying to say to help you.
Okay. I'll, I'll stand on my tiptoes, you can see me better. Uh, option one, of course, I had mentioned, is selling the land to the property owners. Uh, there would be an easement for the walking path and the city would still, uh, need to issue permits for the docks. Uh, this answers some of the questions because it completely removes the liability issue for private docks on public land. Uh, one of the benefits is that the city would get a cash injection and, um, I assume cash is always in short demand or short supply. Uh, there'll be an increase in annual property taxes and, of course, there's gonna be annual revenues for the permitted docks. Of course, there's always gonna be details that need to be worked out, various things that we've talked about are, uh, that we wouldn't want any little chunks remaining if one or two of the property owners decided they did not wanna purchase the section in front of their land. We'd have to make sure that we could come to an agreement on something like that. Um, there, in any one of these options, there are details that need to be worked out, but none of them did we see were insurmountable. Uh, option number two was that, um, this land does not get sold and the city decides to allow docks and that they're private docks and they're gonna allow the, the adjacent property owners, uh, to have access to those permitted docks. This also addresses, addresses the question of liability. Uh, through the permit process, the city can require proof of insurance, proof of dock owner, uh, uh, proof of boat ownership and copies of our insurance policies. It's, it's not difficult to remove the liability from the city to the, to the private dock owner. Uh, the city would, uh, realize annual revenue based on permits for ten docks. Uh, for those, um, not wanting to see a slew of docks come into the neighborhood, there would be a maximum of ten, one for each of the affected property owners. But in reality, um, it would, there would be a limit to the number of docks each year in the bay because, um, not every, uh, property owner is going to want to purchase a, a permit. So, the policy can be easy to administer. It can be approved by city council and it can require proof of insurance, proof of ownership. And in fact, um, we did draft a policy, uh, for you that could become the basis of a permit policy and we would welcome the opportunity, if that is the route that is chosen, and we hope that it is, that, um, we would be able to assist in further refining that policy for something that could actually be used and put into place. Option number three is exactly like number two, however, uh, at the last full council meeting when we heard discussion, we heard, um, we heard a little bit of, well, we would want this one day to end. So, our option number two has a sunset clause in it and, uh, eventually, there will be no docks. Um, the way we wrote it was to consider that, um, the owners of these properties must maintain a permit fee and they can skip a couple of years, but at least every third year, they have to pay their fee to retain the, um, the, uh, possibility of putting a dock in anymore. Uh, what this does is it provides for self-determination for the property owners. Despite the fact that for tax evaluation is one thing, the, the market has been allowed to dictate what the, these properties were buying and selling for. So, re, these properties will take a hit because they were selling at an outpaced rate based on the fact they came with docks and had access to the water. So, this way, when the property owner says, I don't wanna pay my fee anymore, I'm too old, I no longer want a dock or I have a financial hardship, a loss of job, they can determine for themselves that they no longer wanna pay for that fee and then, uh, that property would no longer qualify for a dock and eventually through, um, through trichulation, it would all go away. So, back to this, decision tree and options. I have, I don't know if you can, I guess my mouse does work. So, I have, um, talked about selling the property, which is option number one. I've talked about permitting the docks indefinitely and then I've talked about permitting the docks with a sunset. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there are other options that we looked deeply into. We concocted, I, uh, a lot of visions for what those, um, options would bring to the walking path and what the vision, uh, of the walking path, what the vision it would create. And we would definitely welcome conversations with anyone, uh, available to review those, uh, notes with us. So, collaboration is our central theme. The pathway is unique and we are looking for both public and private collaboration because of the uniqueness in the residential neighborhood that we find the path. Um, my last topic is, um, the legality of a permit process and it's been raised to us that we're not sure if, um, Hudson is able to draw up a permit policy for private docks on public land and it has been, um, our finding that this code one, and that's a typo, that's not one nineteen, everybody, it's supposed to be one eighteen point oh five, one B, the city can allow private docks to a non-repairant owner provided Hudson Municipal Code provides for that, which Hudson's municipal code does currently provide for that. The municipal code currently reads, "No person shall construct or maintain a pure or dock extending from the shoreline of any park or public area unless specific authority has been given by common council." The only problem here is that the common council hasn't had a written procedure to give that permission. So, as part of your packet, again, I had mentioned that we had drafted a starting point to that procedure. And if that direction is taken, we'd like to be part of that process to help you refine that permit process. I wanna, do wanna note that under state administrative code, we see that there are criteria that need to be satisfied under this NR one eighteen point oh five. We want you to note that the dock owners, the dock owners can be prepared to show councils how the docks can achieve those goals. We have not yet had time to really pull all of our thoughts together around those issues. Um, but we are looking forward to the opportunity to doing so. So, let's make this time, um, the time that something gets done. Thank you, council, for being the one that doesn't kick this issue down the road any longer. Along with Jerry Clucker, Bruce and Joy Mestamacher, Tom Irwin, Dean and Roxanne Hanson, I wanna thank you for your time, the time you've taken to consider this topic and the time you're gonna spend in the coming months to update or implement a policy that addresses the situation we find ourselves in. The dock owners can wholeheartedly support options one, two, or three. Further, we'd like to help create an environment of cooperation when it comes to developing a written, long-term vision for the walking path and the subsequent management policies to support the goals for the area and our neighborhood. We love our neighborhood and we are glad that the city is such a big part of it. We trust that you will find logic in the goal of collaborative effort when it comes to the decisions that affect the valuable asset of the walking path and the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Any questions by the?
I have a quick question on option number three. Really, how can you, um, how can you say that eventually there will be no docks?
Well, I guess we were thinking that there's, well, there's already some property owners that probably wouldn't start even contributing to a permit process. So, those would be done right away.
Right.
Um, or done in, at year three, I would guess. Um, we just sensed that as people age and don't care so much about, you know, access to the, to the river or as, um, people's physical abilities change their desires or life circumstances or even finances, um, that eventually there would probably, they would all phase away.
But presumably, if the docks are adding value to the property, it might be in that property owner's best interest to maintain the dock so that when they go to sell it, whether or not they use it. I, I think that's a, that's a specious argument. I don't think you can say that there will eventually not be any docks.
I can, I can understand that.
When I think of a sunset.
I think maybe there would eventually decline in number, perhaps?
I, I don't think you can even make that, I don't think we can make that assumption. We're not, it's not a true sunset in that there's not a deadline. You're just kinda saying probably some people will get rid of their docks, but we have no way of knowing that.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the one sticking point on that one that I, that I guess I would point out.
Any other questions from the council? Thanks, Sarah. I appreciate it. A lot of work, I can tell.
Thank you very much.
Right, there are other people now who would like to speak, uh, to the issue and I think we had seven people that I saw. So, I'd like to set a limit of, uh, three minutes, four minutes? Three minutes, three-minute limit, if you would please. So, uh, who's the first person who would like to speak? Just, just let us, give, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Mitch Hobbins. I live at eight twenty-five Second Street on the corner of Second and Orange. I am not fortunate enough to live on First, but I would like to have a dock. So, the fact that I, uh, I, I grew up in St. Croix Beach across the river. This issue happened over there as well, where the people all over town wanted to have their boats moored and they wanted to have the rights to a dock. What ended up happening was is the, excuse me, the city approved having docks and moorings and so on and so forth. But what they had to do was put it on a lottery. First, they put everybody in there, they had public meetings and so on and the people that wanted to have docks and so on were entered into the lottery and they drew the lottery. What I'm hearing here is that great people on First Avenue have their docks. It's like that's the only people they wanna take care of here. They should, the city of Hudson should determine how many docks. They should, the city of Hudson should determine how many docks would fit along that path, and, uh, if, in fact, there is no deeded access for the landowners that are adjacent to the path, they're out of the mix, too. They should be in the lottery, just like everybody else, even though they've had a dock for a hundred years. I don't care if it's not deeded access, they have no more right than anybody else, especially with the city land right there. Excuse me, this is my opinion. But back to St. Croix Beach, they had a lottery. Um, if the person that was picked couldn't come up with the conforming dock, the money, the permits, you name it, or whatever, they couldn't just have a permit and not have a dock there, or a boat moored out on the moorings, just to take a space. If they didn't pay their fee every year and have a boat or a dock there, boom, they came off the list, next person on the list had the opportunity to, uh, have a boat or a dock at that point. Now, I know, I understand we're only talking about docks in a, I don't know how long a length that is, I don't know how many blocks, but I think what you need to do is determine exactly how many docks you want to try to fit into this spot, and then divide it up, and it's going to have to be citywide, because it's, number one, you're either going to be all or none. Either everybody's involved in this, or nobody's involved in having a dock out there. That's my opinion. I don't think it's fair that First Avenue should. For one, they're not riverfront or waterfront owners. They're river view owners, but not waterfront. They cannot list their property as being waterfront property if it's on the other side of the walking path. That's just my opinion as well. They have a view of the river, but they don't have waterfront unless they're deeded access. And I don't know if that's ever happened here, so. But that's just some of my ideas on what should happen, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next person would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Tom Smith, nine twenty-seven Third Street. Uh, the owner, many of you might be familiar of a ratty red Alpha sports car that sits out on Myrtle Street a lot. And I was surprised the other day to get a parking ticket, twenty-four hours without the car having moved. And I wasn't indignant when I got that ticket, I was just rather surprised and thought, oh my goodness, I've only violated this five hundred and twenty-eight times over the eleven years I've owned the, uh, owned the spot, or owned the car and parked it there. That doesn't give me any right to park it there. The ordinance was unenforced, again and again and again. So in my opinion here, we've got home, homeowners that have been enjoying a privilege that they've not been paying for, and their argument is simply that we've always been allowed to. And I, so now you find yourselves in the unenviable position of quote-unquote "taking something away from people" that was never theirs in the first place. There is, there is no adverse possession when it comes to city-owned property. Let's see. The tax records clearly show that the homeowners are not paying for this access. Uh, land values are very similar for a same-sized lot on either side of that street. How do we resolve this? Um, we'll see how that plays out, and you'll probably see me again at the open session. All I know is that there's a fairness issue here. We, earlier in the meeting, we talked about the San Pedro owner that's paying twenty-five bucks a month for parking a dumpster. The groups who rent the ban shell, Lakefront Park, they pay a fee. Uh, the boosters pay a fee to play softball at Grandview. The beer leagues pay money. And here, there hasn't been a penny that has changed hands for this free privilege. And so ultimately, and I, uh, Alder Person Bernard made a very good point, this is not going to sunset. You're going to make a decision one way or another, and it's a, basically a six-figure decision for these homeowners. And, uh, that's about all I've got to say right now, because these properties will change hands, there's at least one listed now, and this is a six-figure decision, give or take. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person would like to speak?
I'm Carol Harden. I live in Fourth Street in Hudson. In looking at the, reading through the document that the, uh, people who have the docks presented, I, I noticed that it says, um, in January twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve, a meeting was held, and that in that meeting, Mr. Paul Stickman, a DNR conservation warden for the Lower St. Croix team, stated that the docks were not legally in place, yet there were no lawyers involved in the meeting. Well, to me, that makes it sound like, just because he doesn't have a lawyer, does that mean that the council doesn't know the law? That he has to have somebody explain the law to him? And I also would like to know why the council members here are, recuse themselves. I don't, they never said why. I'd like to know why they can't vote. And the other thing is, is that this is, river is a St. Croix scenic national river. The DNR has some very strict rules about it. The docks have always been illegal. Cutting down the brush in front of the docks has been illegal, and it's been going on. I don't think that just because your house is there, that you get to have a dock that's obstructing the view, or maybe uglying up the view from the other side, and for everybody else that follows the rules in the St. Croix River scenic waterway. There is an ordinance there. I hope that you're taking that into consideration when you make whatever decision you do. Thanks.
Thanks, Carol. Next person?
Good evening, council. My name is Phyllis Jensen-Lockney. I live at one thousand First Street, and I live on the east side of First Street, um, across from the properties that have the docks right now. I've owned my property for thirty years. I have lived there five out of the last thirty, and I've seen many changes in the path, and the improvements along the river have been great. I think if we start selling off St. Croix River property, we're taking a step back. And I don't know what the DNR's position is on selling hundreds and hundreds of feet of riverfront property, but I would think they probably aren't too pleased with it. Um, I, we have a boat ourselves, we keep it in the marina, because if you have a boat and you want to keep it on the river, then you go to one of the marinas that are up and down the river, and you pay. Two thousand is really a low estimate, and it's probably closer to three or four thousand dollars a year. So we're just saying, if, if you want to have a boat, um, I think these people are very fortunate to have had free dockage all these years, but maybe it's time now that, um, the city take back the property, and the people that have big boats, put them in marinas where they belong. I know this is a tough decision, um, I've watched in the last few weeks that it went from a committee to the common council, back to a committee, and back to the council again. This is a tough one, but I think once you step up to the plate and take action on this, you'll be very happy. Thank you.
My name's David Harden. I'm Carol's husband. Any claim of economic damage that they're presenting really shouldn't be considered because the property owners either knew or should have known at the time they bought the property, the docks were illegal. There's no excuse for them to claim that, well, we're going to lose money because our property values will decrease. If they overpay for property, that's their problem, not the city's. The other issue that comes before you is, do you allow docks at this section of the river? That's the first decision. If you decide you want to allow docks, then you need to decide who has those docks. You know, just because they happen to be living close to that area gives them no precedent. If you're going to allow docks, then you allow them to anybody in the city. Whether you want to allow docks in that area or not, I wouldn't, but if you make that decision, then you need to consider where else are you going to allow docks, and what are you going to charge for them? Why should this area be treated special simply because there's somebody living close there who has been using it for docks? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Greg Rosso. I live on nine oh seven First Street. Um, a few things. First of all, just to give an answer to the brush cleaning, I want to commend the park departments for doing that. Behind me, out of all these years, the underage drinking, the possibility of attacks, the safety issues of people walking, the phone calls I've made to the police, that was wonderful. Okay? Second of all, that's helped quite a bit. I haven't had to call since, and there's been no partying back there. So that was a good move on my part, in my opinion. Um, second of all, I'm hearing that we shouldn't have docks back there. Now, I wasn't part of this group of people that put this package together, but there's a couple of things. First of all, at the original, if you read, if you look at the original landlines, there is a blurred vision of whether that property was ours to begin with, and it was not addressed. Now, that's not an issue for me to say. I don't know. But I think that's part of the mud in all of this. Second of all, there's been numerous opportunities to people, for people to buy at First Street. And I own houses on both sides of the street, and I paid double. It was my choice, but there is a reason I bought for that. Okay? Thirdly, DNR and a lawyer, as you all know, federal, DNR, it's all mud. Nobody knows really what's going on with all that. So when the gentleman came up here, yes, there does need a lawyer involved, because it's all city, state, DNR, nobody knows their clear jurisdiction during all this. Finally, I, I understand some people wanting docks. Okay? Here's your question. If we do have public asset, what's the access to these docks, for public docks? Are they going to drive down the walking path to load their boat? Are they going to come through our yards to get to the street where they park in front of our house? These are issues that I understand somewhat of what some of the people brought up here. My question is, where's their plan? Again, I will say, I wasn't part of this package, but I do live on First Street. So I would, I would suggest, you know, on First Avenue, or Street, I'm sorry, I would suggest that maybe they want to come up with their time and effort and give a, a valid plan on maybe an alternative for what they think should be done. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Greg. Next person? Anybody else here wanting, wanting to speak to the issue?
Shirley Droh, Hudson. I, I feel for the property owners as well, but as elected officials, we're talking about five people who presented, um, their best interest of their, um, property and the value of the property. There's over twelve thousand other residents in the city, and I think it's very short-term thinking if the council would vote to do anything other than protect that national scenic, um, riverway and view for the rest of us there. And as elected officials, I think when it becomes a difficult decision, you have to look at the greater good, not five people. And as a matter of record, there are two large docks there, and two docks that are put in very recently that are now submerged. So when photos are being shown of all of these docks there for decades, that's not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out here?
Hello, my name is Joy Mestamacher. I live at ten fifteen First Street, and I was one of the people with Sarah working on this. Just to, um, address a couple of questions, talking about that, um, she went through issues one, two, and three, but the fourth one, are permitted docks citywide. So it wasn't completely neglected that that was one option, but there are a lot of things that need to be dealt with, just like Greg said, about parking, trash containers, all those kind of things. And then we're in competition with a public marina. So, uh, and they do have a lot of, they have slips at St. Croix Marina. Um, the other thing is to talk about why we felt maybe like that we could have a dock. When we bought our property in April of two thousand, we went to the park board, to Dan Regland, and asked, we know there's a walkway here, we know this is a parkland, but can we have a dock? Do we need a permit? What do we do? And it was assured to us about three or four times in the process of changing docks and different other things, that, yeah, the docks are grandfathered, or they're okay, and that, you know, they're probably going to be fine, they've been there forever, they've been there for twenty-five years. So we didn't know there was an ordinance. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I moved from Minnesota, and I didn't know there was an ordinance. So I don't, I, it, and, and since they knew that we were asking this question, and we weren't informed there was an ordinance, I think it's kind of hard to say that we didn't comply with it when we weren't even told it, when we're talking to the director of apartment. And it all comes down to what is the purpose or the vision of the walkway? Is it a walkway that people walk on and get from one point to the other, or is it a place where it's going to be a campground? Um, there's a lot of different things that I think you need to dis- discover, and until the vision of the walkway is determined, it's hard to answer any of these questions.
Hello, folks. My name is Mark Blackney, and I live at one thousand First Street. And I wanted to be very quick about this, because a lot of good points have been made on both sides of this issue, but it was just kind of a legality question that, that I had. Uh, I keep a boat in the Hudson Marina, and when we have meetings at the Hudson Marina, a lot of people who don't understand the rules too much will always ask, why don't we add another, uh, few more slips, and we can make a little more money here, you know? And, uh, the reason that I am always told by these people that I pay a hell of a lot of money to is that, uh, the DNR won't let them add it even one more slip, let alone one more dock. So I just wanted to mention that maybe we ought to check with the DNR and see just what they will let us get away with. Are they going to let us put in ten more docks? I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the issue?
Good evening, council. Scott O'Malley, ten twenty-four Third Street. All of the comments that have been made prior to mine have had salient points, and I think there are arguments on both sides. One thing that has not been mentioned is that although the city has a long history of rental to private property, of public property to private organizations, it has never concerned river access, and that's what makes this different, I believe, because the river, of course, is our most important asset here in Hudson. And if the city is to consider at any time giving private control to river access, you please need to keep in mind that there are other groups who want that also, who will be in line behind this group to ask the same thing. So any decision you make will not be just for this group alone, but will impact other groups as well, who will be coming to you in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else? We've got everybody? Council members, any comments or questions?
On what Scott said, isn't the Afton Boat Cruise Line private rental on public dock?
My understanding is the city has the permit for the dock, and the city leases it to the-
So it's a city-owned dock?
Uh, the, I don't have the lease in front of me, but I think the Afton, I know they're responsible for maintaining and doing any improvements to the dock, so I don't, I can't say whether it's city-owned or privately-owned.
I'd like to know the answer to that.
But it is subject to a lease.
I'd like to know the answer to that before.
Yeah, I can pull out, I don't have it with me, but that is a situation where there is a lease in place for a dock.
But the city does own it.
I can't say whether the city owns the actual dock. The city has the permit. Because it's coming off city property. The city is the riparian owner, and only riparian owners can get a dock permit.
So I asked a question, thanks. So I asked a question.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I-
I guess I do have one question, and Sir Catherine. What's the situation as we stand right now regarding liability? Came up before a little bit.
Well, I can't, you know, it's, anytime there's some, something on city property, there's the potential for liability. And you're not in control of that, well, unless you were to say, remove it. Um, I suppose you could put something at the, uh, along the pathway that says, you know, city dock- along the pathway that says, you know, "City docks not maintained by the city."
Private.
And the property owners could put private property on their docks. But the fact is, you've got structures on city property that,
Which are exposing the city to liability.
Which exposes the city to liability.
So when the ordinance is in the book saying that if we permit it right now, right now, there's a current liability, is why I'm talking about this. If we permit what's currently there right now until we figure out what we're going to do, does that transfer the liability onto those dock owners or is it still on us?
Well, no, it would still be on the city unless you have a subject to you, some sort of permit ordinance or procedure or agreement that they have to provide insurance and show, you know, and name the city as an additional named insured, that kind of thing.
And I was thinking along the same line of, is there any way of transferring that liability to the homeowners in the interim?
Why don't you let me talk to the, our, the city's insurance company? They're much better at, you know, giving an answer on how to do it, and that would be helpful.
Because I don't want, you know, the length of time that we're taking to go through this, I don't want it to be detrimental to the city if something were to happen.
So you're thinking along the lines of a temporary permit until?
Yes, just something temporary, but until we come to a decision.
I'm not even calling it a permit, I guess. I'm just saying, I would like liability placed on the dock owners.
Correct. That's how I'm thinking too.
Yeah, what would we need to get for them, that it shows up on their homeowner's insurance as a, you know, that that's part of their?
And then I guess it begs the question, what insurance company would give you insurance for private property on public land?
Yeah, that's not included within their property. That's why I think if there were to be a claim right now, I don't know if their homeowner's insurance would cover it. I just don't know, because it's, it's not on the site that's covered by their insurance. So that we can get an answer to pretty quickly. I mean, in terms of the city's insurance.
Okay.
Vote policies. Vote policies for something that covers the docks? Any liability issues?
Yep. Well, we, we're really unclear at this point. And the other problem we have is that according to our understanding, the only people who can own docks on city property right now is the city. And then the city has to lease that dock or permit the dock, but the ownership would have to be with the city. According to the regulations as we understand them. And that creates another issue for everyone. What, I, we've heard the public-
No.
No, we're closed to speaking. We've concluded the discussion. From that standpoint, the council, I guess, we've heard the public speak and we need to bring this back on the agenda at some point for further discussion by the council. And I think that's probably what we would do, is schedule it for the city council at some future date.
I mean, I can just give you some info, I was, the Community Development Department has gone through records and so forth, so I can, I just got them on Thursday, but I can give you some information. At least, what I understand at this point in time, in terms of the city acquiring the property, in 88, under the Wisconsin statute, railway property, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation had a first right to consider acquisition of the property once in a railroad is abandoned. And the, actually, the DOT gets to decide when it considers it abandoned. So basically, the effect of that is the DOT does not lose its right. And they're correct that this is all pretty complicated, so, subject to things that I don't know at this point. But in any case, the DOT has the first right of acquisition for public transportation, recreation, correctional institute, institution, some sort of public use, but I think it's those three things. That's 85.09. This DOT can release its rights to an affected municipality to use the property for those same purposes. And it's under those auspices, I believe, that the city was able to purchase the property. In other words, what I'm saying is I think there is probably a restriction on the use of that property for recreational, transportation, or, obviously, it's not going to be a correctional institution, but some places railway property may be appropriate for that, not here. That's one thing. Secondly, park impact fees were used to purchase the property, which is just another sort of restriction on the property unless it, park impact fees were to be paid back or some sort of thing like that. But it was clearly purchased as a, as public park. Part of purchasing the property is purchasing the riparian rights. I mean, that comes with riverfront property. Once you convey those, you don't, you don't get them back. And riparian rights give you, it's been referred to as a pathway. Well, the fact is, the city owns that property. They have put a pathway on it. But there may be other uses, you know, for the entire property. It's not, it's not simply a pathway. It's public parkland at this point. And I just offer that so that it's referenced in the park, there is a park plan, recreation plan in 87. It was referenced in the park plan. I haven't had a chance to review the most updated one, but I think the park has, you know, considered use of this property. They were talking about fitness stops. Anyway, it's parked. It's not simply a pathway. I just want to make that clear. I have not looked into this Regulation 118.09 that they cited as allowing the city to assign permits. That may be an option. I don't know, but.
Okay, I guess we can conclude this. I'd like to say thank you to all of the people who made comments tonight. It's always important to get input from the people that we represent, so all of that is appreciated. And we'll just schedule this for a future meeting.
Are we going to want to do what Lori suggested and have another public hearing on this when we reschedule it? Or are we going to move straight into a meeting?
I think we've gotten a lot of information tonight, and we've spent probably 45 minutes to almost an hour on this. And I would think we have enough so that we could probably move it to a city council meeting with all the information that we have available.
I guess one thing I would ask is that we try and get an answer to that question regarding liability.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call it.
Right, so are the members in agreement? We move it to the next, well, maybe not the next city council meeting, but a future city council meeting, it'll be on the agenda. And at that point in time, we'll probably be recommending some type of action, so it could be a couple of meetings out, or three meetings out, just so that we get enough time to digest everything and make a decision at some point in time.
But based on the three meetings, you're definitely going to find out about the liability?
Yeah, I will. And I'll send, I'll email Mayor Virchell and Devon, so something can be done.
Okay. All right, so we'll go on to the next agenda item and bring back our reclused people. Poor Kim. All right, Kim. We have an update from the Hudson Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. I think that's the next item.
Patient.
Very patiently. Was waiting.
Well, thank you. Good evening. I'll try to do my best to brief in my presentation, based on the time this evening. So anyway, what I'm going to do is give you a little bit of an update, room tax report from 2011, and also give you a little bit of an update on what our plans are for 2012. I'll come back down the road a ways and update you again as this year gets more in process. On behalf of the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, thank you for your support of the Tourism Bureau since 1987. The Tourism Bureau has been your partner for 25 years. And the Chamber of Commerce in Hudson has been in existence since 1953. So, this January or so, we'll be looking at 60 years of celebrating here, the partnership in Hudson. Travel Wisconsin and St. Croix County, or travel in Wisconsin and in St. Croix County is on the rise. I gave you a lot of information in your packets, an abundance of information, so I'll try not to reiterate all of that, but some of it I thought would be nice for the viewing audience to know. According to the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, in 2011, visitor spending in St. Croix County increased 7.18% to $74.4 million, as analyzed by the May 4th report from the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. Jobs in St. Croix County relating to tourism equal 1,584 people. The theme for tourism in Wisconsin, it's all about the fun. That's the number one motivator for leisure travel visits here. And based on just released information, the 2011 Tourism Economic Impact numbers, more people are having fun in Wisconsin on vacation than ever before. And that's the message that's being delivered by the Tourism Department Secretary Stephanie Klett and Deputy Secretary Dave Fantel, Eddie Vence, throughout the state. The tourism industry in Wisconsin grew by 8% in 2011. And the tourism economy in Wisconsin picked up steam in 2011 with an impact on the state of about $16 billion, an increase of 8% from the $14.8 billion in 2010, according to research conducted by Tourism Economics. Tourism also supported about 181,000 jobs and about $4.4 billion in personal income. So fully 1 in 13 jobs in Wisconsin rely on tourism. And also lodging sales increased 18% from the lows of 2.09 at the height of the recession. So tourism obviously is an important industry for the communities and businesses in St. Croix County and its region. The uptick in 2011 demonstrates that families directed a portion of their discretionary income to tourism activities, including festivals, excursions, and lodging. The Hudson Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau promotes the Hudson area to attract overnight stays in area lodging properties, resulting in additional tourism spending on dining, shopping, attractions to enhance the economic impact and vitality of the Hudson area. So I have in your packets the Tourism Promoting Economic Development in Several Ways. I might go quickly over those, but certainly can answer questions. Travelers inject money into the local economy through spending on lodging, food, recreation, transportation, fuel, retail businesses. The travel industry also provides jobs. It's beneficial to a community because it enhances the quality of life for its residents, and it also attracts employers. So the primary purpose of room tax funds is to stimulate the local economy with increased tourism and visitors and having encouragement of staying overnight. Also, it does provide a long-term, sustainable funding for a community and tourism promotion. So, room tax is collected from the lodging properties submitted to the city, so there's no tax burden to local residents. It's the visitor who pays this lodging tax for staying in a lodging property. Also, we have the distinct honor of providing increased visibility of the Hudson area through advertising, print, website, and other media, and also the ability to pursue niche market opportunities, including group travel, small conventions, business meetings, retreats, and so forth. Opportunity, also, we have the opportunity, because we're partnered with the State Department of Tourism, to work to garner matching grants and cooperative advertising programs throughout the state and the Department of Tourism. So I'd like to think that the Hudson Tourism Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce is the front door to our community. And each year, the Tourism Bureau sends out hundreds of visitor packets, answers thousands of phone calls, responds to email requests, and questions about tourism in an effort to attract visitors to the Hudson community. So I think here, Mike is going to let me use his laptop, and I have a very brief presentation as well, and I promise we'll keep this one moving. But you do have this information in your packets from me, but I wanted the audience to be able to see this as well. This more or less is somewhat of a summary of 2011 room tax, advertising, and so forth. Okay, we skipped the beginning. That's the second slide. So can we go back one? All right. Here's our advertising campaign that we've been using for the last year and a half or so, "Say Hello to Hudson." This is just an example of a couple of the ads that we've placed in publications recently. We're in Minnesota Monthly, Minneapolis-St. Paul Magazine, Shops Magazine, Each Shop Play, Spaces, Wisconsin Trails, What's Playing Magazine, Chicago Elite Magazine, Milwaukee Journal, and so forth. We also do our best to do press releases and stories about our area that we submit to our list of media outlets. Okay, next one. This is just a, as you know, the city partnered with us three years ago now to mark the Yellowstone Trail, and we just recently had the third year of that event. This marks the second year from last year. And I wanted just to show the audience of some of the Yellowstone Trail. For those of you who don't know, it's an east-west highway, started back around the 1915s or so, and it was going from, we can slow down just a sec, from Puget Sound, Plymouth Rock to Puget Sound. So it was a, it was a driving highway, similar to a Route 66. And what we tried to do with this, besides having the event, is we tried to encourage overnight stays and travel throughout the year and regional partnerships. Okay. We also had a travel writer here from Germany, and she did a stay here and a write-up here and was released internationally, and we actually worked with Explore Minnesota to have her here. This shows our event, Spirit of St. Croix Art Festival in 2011, and our partnerships with the FIP Center for the Arts. And we continue to do that event and have great success with it, so I thought it was worthy of showing you some of those photos. Lovely artists and photos. Here we go. Okay, and here's, here's an example of some of our itineraries and stay-and-play packages that we have on our website. We do a historical one, a golf one, a girlfriend's one. We do a stay-and-play suggestion for our Christmas Tour of Homes. Here's some more examples of some of the advertising that we've done in other media outlets. And so you see, we do various sizes and various kind of snapshots, depending on the publication. Here's some more examples of some of our advertising that we've done. We also have an Advertising Opportunities Committee at our, at the chamber, where we pool funds together with some of our business members to kind of be able to have more power in our advertising. So here shows a very beautiful, I think, example of some of our advertising campaigns. And then, of course, you're all familiar with the Christmas Tour of Homes. This is some of our material that we produce and invite people here. There's different options for tourism attractions. We do have a stay-and-play getaway package where we work with the lodging properties and the FIP Center for the Arts and so forth to provide an experience and hopefully encourage people to stay longer than the day we want it to stay. Here's a new one. We skip a little. I'll talk a little bit about this in a minute, but this is 2012. This was a Valentine promotion that we did, which is encouraging people to come to Hudson for, it's a, it was a week-long promotion. And part of the promotion was to stay. And so, that was kind of a fun promotion that we had a, had a really nice response to. And then the next one was an event that we tried this year for the first time. It was called River Life. And that, we partnered with many businesses in historic downtown and with our lodging properties. And the idea was to encourage people to stay overnight, if not just one night, for the weekend. So this was a, I think, a very beautiful campaign and was advertised in new ways, electronic media, Facebook, and also with TwinCities.com, behavioral marketing, and so forth. This show is this year's Yellowstone Trail. We developed a new logo for the event, and we've expanded it greatly this year. We had a very successful vintage car and antique car show. We had activities going on at the FIPS with fiddling and so forth, things that were more historic in their description. And a cruise that we had on the Afton-Hudson Cruise Lines as well. So I just wanted to give the viewing audience a little bit of a view of some of the things that we've done. So that concludes that. You can, you can finish up the PowerPoint. So we did talk about the advertising. We did talk, we didn't talk about some of the tourism brochures. We had a piece called "The Passport to Hudson", which was a shopping di- which was a shopping, dining, and lodging and attractions guide. And we sent, we since this year have replaced it with, with this. I put this in your packets. We partnered with the Hudson Star Observer on this one to provide a visitor and resident guide. The nice part about this is it's a, it's a much improved piece from the piece we've done before. And we also partnered, the, the attraction in working with the Tourism Bureau is that we have tourism outlets or tourism locations that we sent this all to with the help of the Star Observer. So they, this is in twenty-eight locations, tourism destination locations throughout the state of Wisconsin. We have other brochures. I mean, we have a lot of brochures that we, that we use room tax for. We also partnered with the county to do a county bike map. And we send out a lot of tourism packets to, to visitors who are, who are considering coming to our area to stay. On the website, I gave you a report on our website activity. We do receive thousands and thousands of hits each month. We did also experience about a sixteen percent increase in, um, visitors and repeat visitors from twenty-ten to twenty-eleven. Also, we're doing website enhancements all the time. In addition to that, we are producing a new website, which will folk, it'll be a whole new look for us. It will be specific on one side of this new, um, design to the chamber and the business entity that we are. The other side will be much, much more aggressive on the, on the tourism side. So we're very excited to introduce that this summer. We also have gotten good at social media, Facebook advertising, and promotions of events and programs. We already talked about the Yellowstone Trail. The neat part about that is that it's not just a weekend event. It's, it's a Route sixty-six travel come any time. And, and we are working with traveler, with communities all across Wisconsin, especially regionally, to come up with a passport time-driving brochure that we're working on in order to encourage people to stay along the trail and specifically in Hudson. Let's see, what can I see? Oh, um, we also, last, last year, we also assisted in the promotion of the International Pee-wee Hockey Tournament, which of course was a great heads-in-bed event. And that was very, very well received and successful. We also get information about other activities and events in, in town, including fishing tournaments and so forth. And the whole idea is to encourage people to stay in our lodging properties. We're also an extranet partner with the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. So we are partners with the state and with that, that warrants a lot of added promotion and added partnerships throughout their media outlets as well. One of the things that has been really rewarding for us is the membership with Circle Wisconsin, which is a group travel marketing company. And they encourage motor coach travel to a community. So we've been a member of that organization for a while. In fact, last year, we hosted a familiarization tour. And, um, last year, June sixth, and, um, let's see, we had, I have the stats in your packet here, twenty-two group travel companies from eleven states. And, um, so the bus was full, about fifty-six people. And, and according to Circle Wisconsin's statistics, fifty-seven percent of the companies that attend one of these familiarization tours generated four point five million dollars in revenue to the state over a three-year period. And I have just a couple of examples. I'm talking, am I, are you bored? Should I stop? It's getting late here. I apologize. But there's some examples I wanted to share with you about the motor coach success we're having. Mary Weller at our office is our tourism specialist. So she's been focusing on group travel. And, um, we have had some really great returned visits from this familiarization tour directly related to that. One group tour came in from Rochester. It was a mystery tour and they spent some time with the Historical Society and the FIP Center for the Arts. We had a second group that's scheduled to come here. It's a retired South Dakota Teachers Group in September overnight in Hudson. Twenty-five rooms, forty people, uh, which, which... And what we're doing, or what Mary's doing, is actually organizing these stays for these people. So she's actually working with the lodging properties. She's working with the attractions. She's providing pricing. She's making it easy for these people to, to come here. So that's been a very significant inclusion or addition to our office. The, the next one was just an information from today. It's a bank tour coming from Sheboygan. It's a mystery tour. They're staying here for two nights. They're doing a boat cruise. They're doing dinner and lunch. And, uh, Mary is booking everything for them and providing them with all the information. And another nice part that just happened last week, in fact, there was a couple that came in that was staying in Hudson one night and then they were going to Minnesota to continue on with their trip. Well, they were having trouble figuring out what to do there. And Mary convinced them to stay in Hudson and ended up getting them here for three nights. She actually called the lodging property. They happened to have a cancellation. These people were so thankful. They stayed here for three nights instead of one. So we felt that that was really wonderful. And we should have gotten a testimonial from them so that we could promote it. So anyway, we, we've been successful with golf stay-and-plays, the lodging properties, and our, and our golf club members work well with us in that regard. I also go to the Governor's Tourism Conference every year. In twenty-eleven, it was at the Dells. There were seven hundred tourism-related attendees. It was a three-day conference. This year, in twenty-twelve, you can tell that the industry is coming back because there were a thousand attendees. It's the largest tourism conference in the U.S. So anyway, um, regional connections with St. Croix Valley Regional Tourism Alliance. We've been members of that organization, run ads in their, um, in their publication, which looks like this. So this present, this promotes the St. Croix River Valley on both sides of the river. And it's kind of anomaly in to itself because it's a two-state partnership promoting the river for sixteen years. And it's looked at by the state as quite a, quite a feat of partnership. Let's see, I'm almost finished here. Oh, another thing that we did last year, which was really fun. Last year marked the St. Croix River Association's hundredth anniversary. And we worked with that group. It was called Take Me to the River. And, uh, we organized, they camped in Lakefront Park, which was also something that was special for them. And we off, organized activities and entertainment and so forth for them while they were here. So tourism materials available at our office, at our vestibule next to our office, open twenty-four seven. We have tourism information available across the street at Alvegale Page. And we also have tourism information up at Quick Trip, up on the hill. And they do go, go through a lot of, a lot of tourism information. In your packets, you also have information about tourism initiatives that we do that are not related or they're not using room tax dollars, but they truly do promote tourism in our area. I mentioned the, the connections with the Department of Tourism in the state. I, I also mentioned in there, as a gateway partner, we had Tourism Information Center with the closing of the one up on ninety-four. We have served that role at our office by providing state tourism information. We've been successful in organizing some television coverage and programming. And certainly, we do a lot of press releases and tours and invite media here a lot. I mentioned that we partner with our Advertising Opportunities Committee, which is a chamber committee where we pool our funding to have extended reach. We also do the Spirit of St. Croix Art Festival, Christmas Tour of Homes. And then there's partnerships with the Boosters and the Pepper Fest and the Hot Air Affair and the Hilltop Pumpkin Party and celebrate the holidays. And we do take all the phone calls and all the media relations that we can for them. So with that, I thank you for the partnership. We've had a great year. I've given you all the reports and the finances and so forth. If anybody had questions, I'm happy to answer those questions an hour later. The, the receipt of room tax from the lodging properties is increasing, so things are good. So, um, we do budget conservatively, but have been, have been very thankful that our lodging properties are doing very well. So I also, in your packets, gave you some of our suggested, or it's not our suggested, it's what we presented to the board. It's our twenty-twelve tourism budget to use of room tax. So you have that as well. And you have a, I see John has, it's a history of, we, we obviously track where we've been and, and where we are on our, over the years of doing this. So, anyway, that's all I have. Oh, the other thing too, I could go on and on, couldn't I? I also provided you... I also provided you the Spaces Magazine. And the whole thing is about Hudson. And that was a really significant thing to accomplish too, so.
Well, thank you for your report, Kim. Questions? Does anyone have any questions for Kim? We, uh, we believe it's a great partnership also. And it's worked out really well for us and I think our business community and our whole community, the tourism dollars are, are well-spent and well-deserved, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other person have any question or anything they want to add? City attorney?
Nope.
City administrator?
Very quickly, um, election on Tuesday, the recall election. The last day to vote absentee is Friday. There is no absentee voting on Monday, so it has to be done by Friday. We're open to five P.M. The polls are open seven A.M. to eight P.M. Anticipate lines, you know, don't anticipate getting it out in five minutes because we are expecting a heavy turnout. So I'm just putting that caution out there. And if you have not voted since the last election and you have moved, you need to reregister. So if you have to reregister, you need to allot time for that. I'm just letting people know that ahead of time so they're not surprised when they get to the polling place. That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Hall in favor?
Hi.
Thank you for all your time tonight.
Is that long for a second?